November, when we first were discussing this topic. And he's here to my right and is going to go over the presentation. We made a couple of minor changes to the fees, but nothing too substantial. But it is about the current site for the most part. And then we'll be able to answer your questions with that.
Thanks, Margaret. Again, I'm Ben Griffin.
Can you move to microphone, sorry?
Etcetera?
Yes.
I presented a very similar presentation at the previous virtual work session. As Margaret said, we made some very small changes, mostly related to libraries. And I'll point out those differences as we get there. But I'll move through some of these first slides, but quickly. That way, we can, you know, have discussion on, you know, the actual, you know, fee calculations. All right, so very quickly, you know, in fact, these are one-time fees charged to future development to offset their growth-related capital costs. So we're not going to use them for, you know, operations, maintenance, rehab, repair, replacement, anything like that needs to be a capital cost for something new that is growth-related. You have to prove three things: need, benefit, proportionality. So need, that's, you know, the easy one. We would just say, hey, look, we need additional infrastructure to serve this growth. Here are all the improvements that we need: proportion share. We want to make sure that, you know, we charge different types of revenues based on the actual demand. So because we're looking at assessing fees to residential development, we're going to do this per person. And so we'll use census data to say, all right, the average single-family home has more occupants than the average multifamily unit. So we should charge a single-family a higher fee than multifamily because, you know, on average, there are more occupants at that site. And then benefit, this is, you know, a sort of two-pronged portion. So there's geographic benefits, so we want to make sure that the taxpayer lives close enough to the improvement to gain benefit from it, which, that's not necessarily an issue here. If we were in, you know, a sprawling city, you know, it could be an issue where we, you know, we're doing water and solar fees, you had multiple systems, you know, that would be an issue where we would want to have service areas. But, you know, it's not as much of an issue here. And then the other part of that is, we want to make sure that if you collect that fee revenue, that you also spend it. So the fee payer receives a benefit from that. So making sure that you put your fee revenue in a separate account from the general fund and that you spend the money in a timely fashion. Three methodologies, they look at points in time. So past is the cost recovery methodology where maybe you've oversized some sort of infrastructure and you're going to have future development buy into that excess capacity. Present is the incremental methodology where it just says, hey, presently, this is at a level of service, so we just want to maintain that. So the easy one would be, you know, acres of parkland per person. You know, if you have your three acres per thousand, I'm just making this up, you can actually see it from the slides, like, you know, if it was three acres per thousand today and you want to maintain that going forward, we can set up a fee to maintain that. If you, you know, wanted to charge four or five acres per thousand, well, that's increasing the level of service. And you can't charge future development a higher level of service than existing development receives unless you have some outside funding source to raise that level of service. That way, you treat everyone the same. And that's, you know, a big thing with impact fees. You have to treat everyone the same. You cannot charge future development a higher level of service than existing development receives. And the buying methodology is the plan-based, so it looks to the future and says, you know, maybe we're here and this is where we want to be. So that park example works out well. If we're three acres per thousand, we want to be at five, okay, we can do that. But here, you know, this is growth share, down here to raise that level of service, this is existing development share. So how much money do we need to identify outside of the impact fee program to raise that level of service and treat everyone the same? And credits, so the site-specific credit, that is handled administratively after any fees were going to effect. So if, you know, developer dedicates parkland, builds, you know, a portion of freeway, because those are improvements that are included in the impact fee, they would need to receive a credit to offset, you know, what they would pay in fees. The debt service or dedicated revenues, those, you know, are handled in the impact fee study, so it's essentially a credit to the impact fee, so it lowers what you would charge to future development. That way, you don't have to offset any, you know, future, you know, bond payments or anything like that. It's much easier for us to do the credit in the impact fee study than for doing back-end to do it each year and, you know, worry about, you know, charging someone, you know, twice for the same improvement. All right, so any impact fee one-on-one type question before we move into development projections? Okay, so... Took me a second to focus on those tiny numbers. So what we're showing here is the ten years of projected residential development. And I'd say residential because, you know, we're looking at parking library fees, so we will assess those only to residential development. It is page 29. And so, you know, what we're showing here, the single-family units, we're showing the increase of 4,000 units. And this comes from the work that's going into the comp plan. Tishal Vice did a market and economic assessment last summer, maybe spring. And, you know, that goes into the comp plan. And so what we're doing here for, you know, the single-family units is we're sort of going to lower it, trying to be conservative with those projections. And then the multifamily, these projections are based on development in the pipeline as of its previous summer. With that, we're saying, you know, about 1,600 units. One thing to keep in mind, you know, the way we have structured most of these fees, it's most important to get our base year number correct. That way, our levels of service are accurate. And it's, you know, if you grow faster, don't grow as fast as we're projecting, it doesn't really affect the fees. Because a lot of these are incremental expansions, so it's just based on the existing level of service, so we can generate more revenue because you improve more. If you don't grow as much, you generate less fee revenue, you build less, you acquire less. So that incremental methodology does provide a lot of flexibility. And it also safeguards the general fund from having to step in and fund something if you don't grow as quickly as, you know, we're projecting.
So these projections are based on, you know, not past or future?
A lot of your, a lot of the fee methodologies use the incremental methodology. But the projections are based on, you know, our best estimate of what we think will happen over the next ten years. And keep in mind, you know, you really want to update your fees every three to five years. And then, you know, in times of very rapid growth or high inflation, you know, sometimes it makes sense to, you know, update your fees even more frequently to, you know, so you don't get behind. Because, you know, if inflation stays high and we have said, hey, this is, you know, what we think costs you're going to be, and you wait, you know, six, seven years to update your fees, well, every year of inflation, you know, you're basically losing that fee revenue. And so your, essentially, your buying power is less and less for that acre of parkland or, you know, that, you know, those lighter collection materials. So, you know, again, it's most important for that five-year timeframe. But again, if you are growing much faster than we're projecting or, you know, costs are changing faster, it doesn't make sense to just go ahead and update that sooner rather than later. Any questions about the development projections? All right, so we'll start with libraries. So we're going to have a citywide service area. We're looking at two components. So we have a facilities component, so the actual brick-and-order library, and then we have the collection materials component. We're using the incremental methodology for both of these. That way, we can maintain the existing level of service. So what we're showing here is that we have 25,000 square feet of library facilities today. And all we're doing here is to say, hey, we want to divide that by our, you know, existing population. So, you know, we provide about 44 square feet of library facilities per person. And, you know, based on ten years of projected growth, maintaining the level of service would be, you know, 5,400 additional square feet of library facilities. Again, it's just to maintain the level of service. If you grow faster, you generate more fee revenue, you build more. If you grow slower, your collections go down, but you build less. Again, it really isolates the general fund from having to step in and, you know, fund any gap that you have in those collections. The assumption here is that the cost per square foot is $400. So literally, we're going to just say, hey, $400 times that 0.414 square feet per person is how we come up with the actual cost per person. Next up, we have the collection materials. So this is the change from the November. What we've done here is, we went back and looked at all the collection materials and we added in a lot of the audiobooks, basically the last three lines, the digital collections. But the cost per unit was lower than what we were showing you previously. So even though we have more units, the unit cost has gone down. And so the, you know, the cost per person has gone down slightly since last time. But, you know, it's like, hey, just to maintain the existing level of service, we need about 24,000 additional units for, you know, future growth. And so that's about $400,000, I think it's, yeah, $300,000. So any questions related to the collection materials, the changes that we made since November? All right, so all we're doing here is just, we're saying, hey, whatever those unit, you know, proportion costs are, we want to add those together. So it's about $194 per person for libraries. And then we simply multiply by the occupancy rate of the different housing types. So we're... And so what we're doing here is saying, hey, a single-family unit, based on census data, has, you know, an average occupancy rate of 2.6 persons per housing unit. So 2.6 times $194 means that for the library component, a single-family home should pay $505 for their growth-related capital costs. And for a multifamily unit, it's a little over $300 per unit. So any questions for the library fees? Okay, so with parks and recreation, we're also looking at citywide service area. We're looking at five components. They're all incremental, again, provides that maximum flexibility. So we're looking at the actual land for a park, the improvements at that park site, trails, greenways, and recreational facilities. So with the parkland, to maintain the existing level of service, you need about 70 additional acres over the next ten years. And the assumption there is, you know, the cost is $75,000 per acre for land acquisition. Next up, the park improvements. To maintain the existing level of service, you would need 12 additional park improvements. And the weight of average of more existing amenities is just shy of $500,000 per unit. So with those 12 park improvements, you know, it would cost about $6 million to construct those over the next ten years. For trails, you'd need almost two additional miles of trails. And I think that the cost per mile is about $130,000 on that. Greenways, you'd need about five additional acres. And we're using the same land acquisition cost as parkland, so the assumption there is $70,000 per acre for greenways. And then recreational facilities, if you were to maintain the existing level of service, you would need 6,400 additional square feet. And the assumption here is $400 per square foot for recreational facilities. So adding up all those per-person costs, it's about $100 per person. So it's just shy of $3,000 per single-family unit and just shy of $2,000 for any future multifamily fees. And then the summary of that would be, you know, the proposed single-family fee is $3,402 and the proposed multifamily fee is $2,170. Just for more reference, this is a P comparison to, you know, other cities and counties sort of in the southwest to give you a better idea, you know, where Madison, you know, falls where it is. Yeah, I think it's... I didn't suggest in the presentation. All right, I believe that is my last slide, so if there are any questions or comments.
And I, um, I'm additional about what this is. And based on the...
Based upon the discussion that you had in November and some of the questions related to the growth and what kind of revenue the city might be able to expect based upon, you know, where we are in terms of development. I thought it would be helpful to have this information. So can you go over that whenever you would like? But this gives us some of those questions that you had back in November. So if you want me to review on hand, if you want to wait, I can do that.
Does anybody have any questions for Ben just on his presentations? How the fees were calculated? I have one follow-up question. When you mentioned that for accounting purposes, you would segregate departments, how would you count them for these two categories? Because we're looking at strictly residential and impact fees to, and at the library and the library. Would you rather subdivide the fees that are corrected by capex, what account for the library, what account for the department? And then you segregate what is in into the report?
Yeah, sure. Quite, you want to make sure that you keep your impact fee funds separate from the EBS.
And the fee categories have to be separate. So what you collect on parks, you couldn't spend on libraries, for example?
Right, yes.
Okay, and then when you talked about the current level of service in terms of what we, then this is how you calculate what the fee should be. If we were to create a new project, for example, the mayor has done a recent presentation where he talked about the Hexagon problem and we're actually building all the boards out there. That's not a, that's a new facility that he's talking about. So even though your fees are calculated based on current level of service, if we're producing something new, the fees can go toward a new park and rent project.
Yeah, and, you know, I would say, if you think it's 100% growth-related, then, you know, maybe, and, you know, this is all on timing. Because if you were to build these pickleball courts in five years, this would be an issue because you would have fees generated and waiting in the account to do them. But, you know, if you're going to build these pickleball courts, you know, sometime in the next six months to a year, then you're probably not going to have enough fee collections to construct all of it. And so, you know, there are a couple of different things you can do. You could say, all right, well, we think that this is going to provide benefit to existing development and, you know, they've been asking for it. So maybe we fund part of it with impact fees and we can fund part of it with another revenue source. Or you say, yeah, we, you know, we're at max capacity on these other amenities, we're going to use our funds for that if we don't have them yet. So essentially, we're going to, you know, create an interfund loan. And so we're going to go ahead and fund it now and then pay ourselves back for these future revenue collections.
If we do that, so we don't have pickleball now, and then we want to add it?
Well, actually, we do have two, we do have two courts.
Okay, extensive.
Right.
Okay, so that would be a whole new thing. Would that not be a whole new thing? Because it really hasn't incrementally grown. So how do you make the difference? I think that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, good question. So, you know, what we have done with that improvement category is that here's a list of all of the improvements. And, you know, pickleball, you know, is a type of improvement. And so what we're saying is, hey, you may not build exactly something similar to what you have, but they're all part of improvements. You know, we're using, like, just shy of $500,000 per unit. So, you know, your pickleball courts are going to fall in below that. So it, you know, it's not something, or I guess it is something that you currently have. But yeah, it's, you know, it's a part improvement, it's, you know, similar in kind to other types of improvements, so it's fine. Now, if, you know, if you're going to say, hey, look, we're going to build a football stadium, because we did not include that as a, you know, a type of improvement, you know, depending on what's at that stadium, maybe, you know, it's not eligible. But really, you know, the intent behind the law is to make sure that you're providing, you know, something similar. And, you know, pickleball or, you know, a basketball court or, you know, a tennis court or a baseball field, those are all, you know, similar in kind, so it's fine to do, you know, here or there, you know, similar type improvements.
Okay, but then if we did, we'd be taking away from our fund. If the things are established, we may need to be expanded. Because you're still only going to get so much money.
It's a choice of... When you collect the, you collect the impact fees, you could, you can use those fees for the park improvements, right? So that's a decision that the council makes. You know, are you going to include a tennis court this year? Are you going to convert a tennis court for a pickleball court? Are you going to put in a disc golf course? So that's just a funding decision. The impact fee doesn't have to be, you know, like, X dollars for a tennis court, X dollar for a pickleball court, etc. You've got discretion as long as you're using it for those park improvements.
Okay, but just remember, any discretion you are taking, why page of funds, you can't be nails.
There's, there's trade-offs, right? So if you're going to fund one thing, you're not going to fund something else. That's a decision. Also, just wanted to point out with respect to that, so on page 16 of the study, we had included in the last previous update of the study that you had in November, the Hexagon facility. And, and you'll see there that we footnote it because of the time this was done, December 14, we hadn't closed down the facility. But the tennis courts are there. So effectively, what I understand Reck is talking about is converting the tennis courts to pickleball. So we've got, effectively, I don't think that there's much cost difference between a pickleball court and a tennis court. So we're covered in terms of pickleball, it's just called a tennis court here, because that's what it is currently.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted clarification, so... I have one other question about, you know, you talked about the engineering needed, Reck and construction costing this. Is that something we would write into our ordinance then? This is what we will use and this is how often we will use it? Is that a rule or how would you?
I like to... Often, so I would say, if this is the index you want to use every year, because you don't want to switch between this because they may not show the second thing, then I would name it. And then I would say the same, just so you're treating it the same every time. But I mean, you could, you could use, you know, any, and that's some good, you know, you could do any time plan, but he is making sure you stick with that, you know, every time.
Okay, and so every year would not be too often? Because we can mention three and five, but, I mean, costs are not so crazy. Are we safer to say every year at this point and not have to? We don't need to.
I mean, you, you could make kind of adjustments to the fees each year if that, if that is how you write your ordinance and if you're in Alabama, you don't have specific impact fee legislation that says this is what you cannot do. And so we use ordinance that's written to make sure that it conforms with impact legislation and it's legal in Alabama. You know, I have a check for returning the high, you know, the annual inflation adjustments. But, you know, what that means is, if, if you want to, I think, study, you know, which you then, you have to say sooner that inflation was, you know, a bit high, that something you do have an annual inflation adjustment. Each other, two separate things. Inflation adjustment would, it wouldn't require, I think, a study, you just, you know, flip fees based on, you know, the previous year's condition.
Okay, and your professional opinion on the existence of a credit?
A lot of years, yes.
Okay, thank you.
A question on, on the study. It looked like we had a lot of other cities that had fairly large values and road. Obviously, that's the most expensive area. But can somebody refresh me as to why we did not include that in our study?
So the direction was to only look at impact fee categories that would be applicable to residential development. And roads, if the city were to pursue an impact fee for roads or fire or police or even general city administrative facilities, that fee would have to be assessed on both residential and non-residential, meaning commercial and industrial development.
Okay, thank you.
So instead of Alabama, how many other cities and counties are you committing fees now? Do you have an idea?
So we're working with Pike Road, right about in Montgomery. They're at a similar stage, I covered that last time for a session with the council. But I'm not sure whether they'll actually, you know, if they will adopt. Because they're, they're looking at, you know, some other categories that might be adoption, you know, like, you know, we've worked with Baltimore County, we've used that happens.
Baltimore County is the only county in the state that has legislation that allows for impact fees. And there was an offense that there's nothing statewide from a legislative standpoint. So with respect to this table, back in November, you had, we had discussed generally how much developments already occurred based upon the growth projection that Tishal Vice had done. So I'll just walk you through this table. On the left-hand side, you'll see the impact fee growth, which is from the study, which is showing, you know, from 2022 to 2032, 5,500 new units. The first, column A, those, that's how many units are already under construction. Column B is of the projects that the city has approved. These columns are shaded in peach, we'll call it. And all of the projects that are identified in the table on the left, on the lower left that are shaded in peach as well, these are all the projects that feed into columns A and B. So of the approved projects, we've got 2,285 units that are in some form of construction right now. We've got 2,800 units that haven't... We've got two thousand eight hundred units that haven't been permitted yet, that they haven't pulled building permits. But they do have an approved project. It's been through planning commission, it's got a plat, et cetera. Or in case an imported project, a site plan. So we add that up. We've got five thousand and eighty-five approved units out of that five thousand five hundred and eighty-seven that was projected for that twenty thirty-two total. The last peach column was created because very commonly when you implement impact fees, if a project donates land, they're going to receive a credit for that. In other words, if land that could be used for public has been referenced, right, or greenways or whatever it is. If they're creating an open space area just for their HOA, they would be able to get a credit for that. So when I went, when we look at the approved projects that have donated land or going to be building out a greenway or that type of thing, I estimate that once they got credit, there'd be about one thousand seven hundred and fifty units left that could be assessed a fee on. So then the three green columns are the amount of fee revenue that you might expect based upon what's been approved and projected. So that first column corresponds with item one in the summary box. So basically, if we look at the already approved projects and you choose not to grandfather any projects and you don't give any credit for open space that's donated, then you could expect to receive about nine million dollars in the next ten years if you still, you know, approve any of the projects. That second green column is for these already approved projects. If you don't grandfather them, but you do give credit if they're going to build a greenway or donate open space, you could get about six point two, six point three million dollars. The last column, if you grandfather the projects, and I guess I should clarify, grandfathering means if a project's already approved, that they may have to pay a fee, and we'll come back to that a little bit. But if these approved projects are grandfathered, then really what we're looking at in this timeframe, the delta between what we've got approved, which is five thousand and eighty-five versus the projection of five thousand five hundred and eighty-seven, we've got about five hundred additional units haven't been approved, we don't have projects for those. But if we just assume that half of them would be same family and half of them would be multifamily and not even building a credit provision, you might get about one point four million. So based upon all of these projects in the orange box in the lower level and assuming another five hundred units got approved, we would expect about one point four million in fee revenue in the next ten years. With respect to grandfathering, when cities implement impact fees, councils will often grandfather because they're willing to avoid litigation. Some cities will grandfather, once a plat is reported. Some cities will grandfather once a project is approved. You have discretion at whether you grandfather and when you grandfather. So the conservative approach to make any impact fee ordinance that you would adopt the most literally defensible, you know, my recommendation would be you grandfather everything that's approved. Because those people bought land assuming certain fees. They, you know, they, they're selling their homes at certain prices based on fees. That said, we do have a handful of projects that were approved with development agreements. And those development agreements includes language that says if the city adopts a fee including an impact fee, you might have to pay the fee. So that's in the development agreement, but that will be a decision point, should you go forward, that you need to make about the grandfathering. There's a number of projects that don't have development agreements with them. So you may decide to treat projects without a development agreement different from projects with a development agreement. But those are going to be implementation decisions you would have to decide on. Bottom line is based upon all, what we got in the pipeline is under construction and a single additional five hundred units. Again, and nothing else beyond the five hundred units being approved in the next ten years, I calculated we could calculate, or could get roughly one point three nine three million. That's under one point four million dollars. There's another page to this and, and I'll just mention it and then if you want to get into it, you can. This is just showing you where the various projects are because I thought somebody needed to ask that question. But the really relevant portion of the second page is on the right-hand side. And this gets at the credit piece of what we're talking about. So just to take Madison Farms is what the project that you recently approved the development agreement for on the south side of Crystal Brown's Ferry, east of the village of Oakland Springs. That's where they're giving us twenty-four acres of parkland. If the park fee that's identified here was in place when that project was going through, they would have to pay the city one million dollars in park fees. Specifically, one one hundred and sixty-six thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars. Instead, we were able to negotiate twenty-four acres of parkland, which is valued conservatively at five million dollars. So this is an example and our parking infrastructure master plan called for regional parking facilitation. And I've got other projects here that we can talk about if you would like. But that's an example where it was really, really did not happen to you in place because any developer would write a check for a million dollars once the fee's allocated. But, you know, giving twenty-four acres of, right where we needed a park was something we were able to do because we had to go, obviously, we were able to negotiate things. So there's some other examples there, not all of them. That was obviously a very extreme example of why the fee wasn't going to be beneficial to us. Not all of them are, are that extreme, I didn't, but that's the most recent project. That's why it's at the top. And I can talk about some of the others where it's a closer call. So I'll leave it at that now and have you answer questions.
If in the future, if we were to approve impact fees, I'm sorry. If we were to approve impact fees and in the future there became a beneficial opportunity where there was going to be a great amount of land donated, would we be able to waive the impact fees or once we would be able to...
So if you adopt implementation, your implementation ordinance is going to get into that. They'll talk about what kind of, what credit you can get. Oftentimes, well, some jurisdictions will, where the developer will present their appraisal, let's say, and say this is what the value of the land is so that you can figure out what the credit is. You know, we've got some projects that are building multi-use paths, some projects that are building greenways. When you look at the impact fee study, you know, each of those costs are different now. And so depending upon what the facility, if you will, they'd be providing, that's how you would determine the credit. But again, that's within the council's purview to decide how you would enact the credit and, and then they want to speak to that. But most, most jurisdictions that I'm familiar with, you know, have that provision in their ordinance.
Here you have a list of four, thank you. Or what's good for the goose is good for the gazer. You've got four projects where there were donations of land listed. And then we have twenty-three total projects that are in the works. So is this donation list a complete donation list?
So if you look at this one, if you look at the first page where we have the approved projects in the lower left, I've put an asterisk on those projects. And I'm being a little, I'll say, a conservative because I'm sure some of these developers would argue that, hey, that I should get credit for this. But where these projects have an asterisk, those are clearly places where we've gotten public land or parks, they're going to build a greenway or a multi-use path. So there's more asterisks there than on the next page. I was just trying to provide some examples. And, you know, the, I did put an asterisk at the village of Oakland Springs. I did put an asterisk at Caston. But I would expect that the developers of the village of Oakland Springs would want to get credit for some of the greenway that they're going to provide. Caston also didn't be doing part of the greenway. You know, I said, well, we'll just give all of Caston credit for the greenway, that kind of thing. But, you know, it's possible it could be divvied out between the, the main village of Oakland Springs and Caston. So that second page, we've just some examples. And, and just to, I'll, I guess I'll try around one of the other examples. So that's Bradford Station, which you may remember was called the Kaiser Project, right on the south side of the tracks. That project, you know, they are having to design and build a greenway about one point two miles of the greenway. So based upon the numbers in the fee study, that has a value of about half a million dollars. The fee revenue that we would get from the townhomes there is about a million. So in this, in that's, in this example, right, you'd be collecting more fee revenue. However, some of the other, I guess, considerations I would suggest is they're all, they also donated to the city five point eight acres along a creek. It's in floodway, we wanted it for stormwater management protection. Whether or not we ever use it for any recreational purpose, I don't know. So I didn't give a value to that from a park credit standpoint, but it does have a value to the city. They're also have twenty-one other acres of open space in their project. And then we were also able to negotiate that their units only use in the story. And again, that was to try and engineer the occupants, right, of those units. So this is an example where I, I think you're gaining other benefits and achieve other objectives of the city to reduce down density, et cetera, that need to be discussed. You may not give them credit for it from a fee revenues standpoint, but those are considerations. So I think that it's a, a little bit of a complicated, you know, puzzle when we're, when we're looking at it. And, and I would say, you know, since we've got the growth policy in twenty eighteen, it's been a very useful tool in trying to negotiate reduced down density, you know, get parkland, get amenities, so restrict the number of free bedroom units, you know, get same-storey product type. And so that, if you adopted impact fees, doesn't mean the growth study, the growth policy goes away. But we lose a lot of bargaining power.
And that's what I was going to ask you. If we were to pass impact fees, in what ways would that be negative in losing leverage?
I'm sorry, Jason Coley just emailed me thanking for the monoburger, so I'm sorry.
I hate work pages.
It was just funny, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Do I need to rephrase the question in front of an answer?
Uh, no, I think I understood the question, so I wouldn't be distracted by that. It was just so random, that was great.
That's your words.
It was. I think that if I understand your question, I mean, certainly having a fee, I think, gives the developers an argument in terms of not, I mean, there's, there's less for us to negotiate with, I guess, on this side. It accomplishes, you know, it accomplishes something, you know, you're collecting money, right, to improve your, your facilities, your park facilities, acquire your land and so forth. So there's certainly a benefit to it. The question is, does that benefit outweigh what we've been able to accomplish with the growth policy?
One of the two, I think, first, as a council, we should say, well, we don't grandfather mine. And then if we agree with it, we don't technically grandfather it, talking about one point three million over ten years. In my opinion, it's not a problem. Or if you're not gonna grandfather, when you've got twenty-six and nine million on the table to talk about, two, two big, big conversations. So I don't know where to start with that conversation. And also my other concern is how this, and, and I, I know it will, um, with what you're saying. Even though we say this is for residential, I feel, I feel like, and my people I've talked to, that it will still have a negative impact on a commercial community. I know that Huntsville are using it against us now, like I have, I have several people say, Huntsville's telling commercial people, they're going to put, you know, your type of fee residential first, you're going to buy land and then have to put it on the office. So Huntsville's already using it against us right now. Even after having this open discussion about it, Huntsville's going to slam this on. So you'll never know what you don't get. So if you're saying six million, nine, nine, nine million miles, if you do this, what are you missing that we spent millions of dollars of pound miles in trying to get commercially in? And then you go, well, we're going to maybe miss some stuff because Huntsville's going to outsell us. And, and I may be wrong, you're, you're the expert, but obviously I've heard other, we're the only person northern of all the counties in that now that'll even have this. So people in Huntsville County, add things to K or Huntsville, wherever, and not have any worries of, not even on the table, why would I risk it coming to my seat on a commercial business property? Not commercial, no, not commercial. They don't know that.
Well, they do not have to assume you are either.
Yes, I would, I a hundred percent would if I was...
I asked the question. I did ask the question the last time, you were here in College, and they said that, no, it really does not temper. In fact, it's, it's a positive because then people know our, our amenities, our standard living is going to continue to be there because you're already building in money for it to be there. So it doesn't become negative for the city, hence, especially as a residential city, not alone. It's a positive because people want to be in, so it's going to be good.
I wish I'd reported that. Yeah, this is something, it's not...
Karen, I gotta say, I don't, I don't think I've ever heard any city or any former government ever say they had enough money to maintain, it, it...
Well, no, because we're getting in the money, just because. Well, no, it's, okay, if I understood everything that you presented so far, okay, as... Because we're bringing in new families to the block, okay, there'd be increase. If they didn't come, it wouldn't be necessary. We wouldn't need any of these increases if there wasn't anything becoming in. But as the study says, an impact fee represents future development's proportional share of capital facilities needed. So the individuals within a new unit will increase demand in the facilities, creating a need to increase the supply of the park, of the rep centers, of the libraries, of the books. All of that has to come up because you're increasing. So all we're doing is coming up and having that money in place for what we needed for those increases. To me, that...
That are moving, so it's just on houses, you're moving able to...
Yeah, I know what I'm saying.
That exists.
So your other neighbor lives in Limestone County, one next to you, and they're still going to use our roads, our library, and our hallways. They're still going to come, run a fence around it. So now, we're not only getting any of their, uh, added loan tax, but they're still using all our facilities. They go, you know what, fuck, we're not paying it. But they're still going to come right here and use all of these buildings and not pay anything. So I, I think...
What do you always start charging for the values?
That's what you're trying to do with this.
This is the people that are now going to be living in our city,
Correct.
are going to be able to have facilities that are not going to be overcrowded in the future because we're planning ahead, have the money in place to increase the facilities as the need occurs.
But, but I think that's where it is, are we talking about one point four million? We're talking about six million, nine million. But one point four, we're raising it about time.
But then...
Maybe it's a, maybe it's time to stop.
Well, the way I'm looking at it, okay, personally, these people, I don't care where they're going to be located, they're coming in to need the services. So I would look at it as the day that it's permitted. When the permit goes out, the fee goes in. When the permit goes out, the fee goes in. Because they're going to be there regardless, whether the improvement has already been, you know, in the books, or whether it's new. These same people are still going to be requiring the same services.
That's, that's what you're saying is not true. And the reason.
I'm not going to interrupt.
What you, what you.
Okay, go ahead.
The reason is not true is because, and make sure I understand this, um, looking into the green, you know, top things, and what we just talked about, what for, this actually mentioned. We get 900,000 per year, or we get 140,000 a year. Pickle all courts, 300,000, 100,000 dollars, any?
Right now, the court itself is, they're saying about 250 for the court, about 100,000 to redo the lane at, at Exxon.
So the whole court, you're, you're talking about three years, like, say, to do a pick-up court.
I'm going to what these studies tell me.
That's what it says. His study says.
His study says, over the period of 10 years, we will bring in.
But the point, Ms. Densing, the point is, is that we, if you don't grandfather projects, which I heard you say you wouldn't want to grandfather any projects. So if you don't grandfather projects, then you would be, and, and I'm assuming, would you give a credit for?
Yeah, I would, right.
So then you're looking at six, you're looking at the middle green column. If you don't grandfather, but you give a credit for open space, then you'd be looking at the 6.27 million dollars.
Over 10 years.
Over 10 years. Because we've already got 2,285 units under construction. Now, if the council city approves another 5, 6,000 units down the road, you know, in 15 or 20 years, then yes, you would accumulate more money. But based upon, so, one of the questions in November was how much of this growth has already occurred? And so that's what this table is trying to show you, right, or how many of these permits have already been issued? So we've already issued permits for 2,285 dollars. So the best you can do, assuming no additional projects were approved, and if you didn't grandfather, which is what you're saying, is 6.3 million, which is the middle green column. It's not the 14 or whatever million in the study. Because half of those units are already under construction. Does that make sense? So you're collecting a fee when you full building permit is what you just said. You're not going to grandfather a project. So that means your universe is column B in the peach, which is 2,800 units. Now, if those 2,800 units are getting credit for their park space, green space, greenways donated, then, you know, double 6.3 million dollars.
I just, it's only one.
I'm just, I'm just clarifying, it's not 14 million, it's. Correct. Correct. We've already permitted the half of the units.
And then in the future, five years from now, we'll have more people that want to be coming in and living here. And they will have this put onto them, so we'll need them for, and I'm wondering if you're only at 10 years, because you didn't continue yours.
Well, the study, the study was done for 10 years. But yes, if, if the council were to adopt a fee and there was more projects that were approved beyond what we've got approved, yes, you would collect revenue for that. But, you know, for this analysis, just to have apples to apples comparison for the, the impact fee study based upon the conversation in November. I took a look at this 10-year period that the study did. And so you would understand what you'd actually be able to accumulate in 10 years, based upon some different scenarios. Does that make sense?
And it's good information, yes, if it does. For this longer, but that's fine, but it's still how, this is ending in 10 years, we continue, the city will continue to increase. We're still going to have to keep maintaining that quality of living. And we only got it in parks, so I wish this really was something we could have, with the fire, with the police, and everything that goes with our population. We really have an error of the town of Hottie.
That's why I thought there was going to be a kill commercial. You saying that right there, or just?
No, because we're not doing it.
Yeah, so.
We're already going to competitive this event.
The house person wants to put it on, I don't know.
It is too bad for them.
That right there is going to kill commercial, that's what I'm thinking.
I'm not.
Well, whenever the person came last time, said he doesn't do it, that's a policy, but, okay.
Yeah, I'm just going to ask a question, these are my, I'll make it up.
That's fine.
So what I'm understanding is, is it's 10 years, 139K or 900K, right? And that's with a credit without credits. And I'm going to play devil's advocate, and ask the question. If I'm a builder, and you put an impact fee on pay, and I've got to pay whatever that fee is, why would I then donate anything?
Yes, they won't. I mean, most, you know, land economics are different in different jurisdictions, but, you know, in California, where impact fees were pretty regular. Developers routinely wrote that check and wouldn't get land. So they're able to build more units. And, and granted, the city gets the fee to be able to improve existing parks, or accumulate the fee to acquire a more park land. But again, we, we wouldn't be able to do that.
More dependent on an impact fee instead of donation?
Yes. I think.
And so the other question I have is, of the cities in Alabama, Fairhope and Orange Beach, Orange Beach specifically, has residence of maybe 6,000 people only. And the whole reason that it's on their roads and that impact, because, and some of it had more than 6,000 people. Is that one, probably, what they did, how they even justify it?
I mean, they, if they have a road fee, then they're charging it to non-residential development. Um, you, you have, uh, you, Baldwin County's not similar to Madison, so it is hard to compare the two. But what is similar is growth. And so what they needed was to charge the roads. And so, you know, it's going to just depend on the, the needs of each individual community, uh, as to what they include.
So ultimately, it comes down to me, is usually, it's ways, right, that you can turn, but, you know, 139K or 600 and some odd K per year. It's just, it's a lot less than donation of 24 acres. Just today, that 24 acres was 75,000 dollars, and I think that's the lowest. Tomorrow, there's no way that's worth the 75,000. So how do you, how do you justify that? So I, I, oh, yeah.
John? John, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, from the standpoint, I think, looking at the juice and water squeeze, um, I mean, it, it really, it, it does, I see where it does it for folks coming in. Uh, it does absolutely nothing for folks that move into existing houses with either more kids or more needs. Um, you know, that, that have impact too, so. I see the value in this. Especially looking at the implications within promotional, and what larger impacts that could have to the timeline versus this.
Hey, John, you're digging hard.
Your, your, your phone is on, I mean, your watch is on, John.
That was weird, I hit mute after that. Did y'all hear anything I said?
Yeah.
You heard what you said. Thank you.
All right.
One of the, the things that strikes me is the dissimilarity between our city and Orange Beach. People go to Orange Beach because it is the biggest. People come to Madison because they want to live here, they like our community, it's closer to Huntsville. But Huntsville's across the street, Limestone County's across the street, Madison County's across the street. If I don't have a kid going to school, or if I have a business, I'm going to go wherever I'm getting to the best deal. So after, I think it was a very, very smart thing for us to do the study. I think it was very smart for us to look at these numbers. I don't think it's a bad idea for somebody to look at them again in the future. But when you're talking less than a million dollars a year, and maybe less than 200,000 dollars a year. That is, that's nothing compared to what we are getting currently from our developers. And I came to, you know, came into these studies thinking, oh, I'm going to be voted for impact fee. There's, it's a no-brainer. It's obvious we need to do this. Those were all thoughts I had, and probably things I've said to you before, Mary Beth. Now I'm going to have to eat those words because the numbers don't work. We always say, the math doesn't work, we don't do it. I'm looking at this map, and I'm not seeing how it works.
I think as we've said, um, remember Beth, what you did? You know, as we've said, you know, this is capturing roughly 10 years' worth of growth. There may be more growth beyond that, as, as Karen was alluding to. And so there could potentially, if you adopted fees, be fees associated with that future growth. But certainly for what we have approved and in this timeframe, I mean, these are the, these are real numbers. I mean, you know, and I, it's hard for you to imagine that you would choose to not grandfather a good portion of these projects. I mean, you're going to get litigated if you've adopted impact fees regardless, that already been told that by developers. So, but if you don't grandfather projects, you know, you're definitely going to be, no, that's not necessarily a reason not to do something. But, um, you know, when you look at the amount of money that you're going to get if you did grandfather, if you made the smart legal choice. Um, and the fact that we're going to lose that bargaining power, you know, it's, it's something you really need to think about. Um, and, uh, and so if not, you are. Because the growth policies are perfect, they'd probably tweak it even to do us a little bit more, give a couple more things. But it is that really effective, as much as it's, you know, creates a lot of stress and work for us all. Um, it has been an effective tool in, in giving, um, actual, you know, improvements, getting greenways, getting protocol, and that type of thing. And we do look at opportunities to get land for a fire station, those kinds of things, which you certainly knows that I've tried. We just haven't had it, had it come along in the right place where we can do that. Um, and so, uh, you know, we were able to negotiate a school site, right? Um, at, you know, the, the district offered reduced price, significantly reduced price. So, um, that's not something that you really capture with an impact fee analysis, but that's really significant for us.
You know, when we're looking at the numbers, when you look at this 6.3 million that, uh, that's the number if we do not add any more residential.
It's, um, if you added another 500 units beyond what's already approved in this orange col, in these orange blocks. That's based on the 5,587 in the impact fee study. So it's an additional 500 beyond what we've got approved.
So we're looking at numbers based on maybe adding 500 units.
Again, we were, I'm doing the analysis just based on 10 years that the study was looking at. So yes, if you look at, you know, approving more projects down the road, you'd have revenue associated with it. But I just, you know. I think there was talk last time and focus on the 14 million dollars in the study. In order.
I had impact fees.
If, if you.
Correct.
And if you would get that 14 million, you're basically looking at approving another, conservatively, 5,000 to 6,000 more housing units in the city. In order to achieve 14 million dollars worth of growth. And again, I'm assuming you're going to grandfather anything that's been approved. But that's what we, you know, we're looking at, we would be ultimately doing over the course of however long. In order to get that amount of growth, you'd need about 5,000 to 6,000 more housing units beyond what has been approved.
We missed our opportunity to ever really make it worth it.
Right, you're right.
It should have happened years ago, if it was going to happen.
It's just, it's not the, it's not the way the state of Alabama has looked at development.
But had that been a year ago, we wouldn't have the development we have now.
And that's not to say, I mean, I think there are states that have impact fees that, you know, have a lot of development. Florida is a great example, Arizona is a very good example, uh, California is a good example. I mean, there are states that have enabling legislation for impact fees for schools and for cities and counties. Um, it's, you know, I think that's not with them.
You know, we first talked about this in 2018, and I think several of us were on board at that time. I, I was definitely on board and pursuing it. But I think our economic climate has changed in those four years. Um, I think it would be more detrimental than positive to our, the goals that we want and the control growth that we have in pursuing it. I'm not saying it's dead forever, but I think right now, at this particular time, it wouldn't be in our best interest to move forward. And that's, that's just my thought. So, um, I'm hearing that the majority, the vast majority of the council does not want to consider the impact fees.
That's what I'm hearing too.
Somebody was calling it, or not.
Okay, so we're going to, I think it is valuable that we have this time, because we get it to, we get it and to explain to people why. Okay, all right, let's move to, thank you, Ben, for coming in.
I want to, real quickly, I agree with what you said, that, that the conversation itself is really valuable. Absolutely, and it helped me understand some of the things that we're able to do, and councils have done, previous council and this council, to manage the growth, which is what we're trying to do. We're trying not to overburden school systems while having a, um, the success in the city and be able to have the infrastructure, both roads and recreation, to, to keep the city going. You know, the example Mary Beth gave on Brown's Ferry, you know, where we could have got a million dollars of impact fees, we probably could have got a million two five. Because they'd gone, she was able to take 200 units off of that, that would have been on that 24 acres that they gave us. So it's a win-win. We just have to continue to make sure each time that we add housing units, it's, that there's value to it, and that we continue to focus on that. And one of the things that she said, and I, and we'll work and bring this to you guys, we may need to tweak our growth policy a little bit, based on some of the things that have happened in the area. Examples, right now, we're paying over three acres. We really, you know, we need to probably bump that up a little bit with some of the stuff that's happening out in Limestone County, to give ourselves the ability to say, yes, come on in, but here's what we need. Versus just build out there and do whatever you want to. So things have changed where we need to continue to, um, bob and weave to make good sense. But I, I commend the councils that have done a good job of putting things in place of labored managed growth. So we'll continue to look at it.
Let's move to, um, Karen McQuinsey, please, thank, uh, please, thank you. Um, along with what the mayor was saying, as we update the growth policy, Mary Beth, I'd really like to hear your opinion on, instead of three acres, what do you think that's the sweet spot is, and why do you think that is the sweet spot?
Okay, let's move to item number two on the agenda.
Karen, thank you.
Thank you.
You all know Garrett, so from Hall 4, and it's going to be up here in this next discussion. Um, we, um, I think I've mentioned to you at a council meeting that Major League Baseball, um, well, a couple of years ago, they got rid of basically the minor league baseball as an administrative organization and, uh, at a southern league, at an administration level. And, um, and part of what they decided to do was adopt standards for minor league facilities. And, uh, it's really kind of a decree, I guess I would say. Um, and, uh, we won't get into all of that necessarily, but, um, they have the right to adopt standards and we have to comply. And, um, and we'll go over this a little bit. If we don't comply, then ultimately the facility could be deemed noncompliant and we could lose, you know, our affiliation, like the Angels could choose to not affiliate. So it's significant. So, um, Major League Baseball is going through and auditing, um, the minor league facilities. Ballcore, um, reached out to them and initiated the audit. The way their audit works is they have a list with the standards. If you don't meet this new standard, um, a given standard, uh, let's say for the number of lockers in the home clubhouse, then you're given points. Points aren't a good thing in this space, right? We wanna not have points. So when they did the audit of our facility, we have seventy-eight points. Um, we can't be any higher than nine points by the start of the twenty twenty-five season. They're allowing a phase in of improvements. So by the start of the twenty-three season, um, we can't have any more than twenty-nine points. And by the start of the twenty-four season, nineteen points, and then again in the twenty-five season. So due authorized for us to retain an architect, to look at the audit, how we can comply with the audit, evaluate some of these, come up with some solutions, and then we ended up getting some cost estimates. So we've been working with that consultant. Um, Garrett and I have talked a number of times. We've gone into the facility, we've evaluated it. Um, we started at one level and we've kind of been little-ing it down, trying to be creative and, um, cost-effective. So we basically are looking at two phases of improvements. That first phase, um, I've been worried basically, um, what we'd be looking at. We have to add lockers in, in three different areas. Um, we've got to upgrade the, um, home clubhouse commissary to include a freezer and dishwasher. We have to add visitor commissary where we're going to, um, be able to do that downstairs as a temporary measure in our late phase two. Um, we've gotta do, um, some adjustment to the batting cage netting. We've gotta add an extra skid, uh, material dugouts. Uh, we need female facilities, physically the female facilities. Um, MLB has told us that we can do a temporary trailer until we can do the permanent facility if we do, um, in, um, the second phase. That temporary trailer, they need to actually see pictures of the trailer. We haven't shown them yet, but they've given, um, uh, Garrett a verbal agreement. And then, um, Ballcore needs to upgrade their internet facilities. So if we do all these improvements, um, you know, conservatively, um, looking at about a hundred thousand dollars for fixed improvements, we've gotta rent the temporary trailer, which has to have a shower and after a minute. And then, of course, we have to pay a consultant to prepare some of these plans. Very conservatively, I'm gonna ask for authorization of up to three hundred thousand. I think they're much below that, but I just wanted to come. The second phase is the big hit. And basically, um, we have to build a new clubhouse for the visiting team. What Major League Baseball, when we built Toyota Field, um, the, you know, Ballcore was very purposeful in that they wanted the home clubhouse to be nicer than the visitor clubhouse. So the home clubhouse has very nice wooden lockers. It's got a commissary, commissary meaning like a dining area and that kind of thing. The visitor's clubhouse is perfectly adequate, um, meets the size requirements of the locker room, but they're metal lockers, they don't have a commissary. Their training room is a little bit smaller and so, and it was intentional because, you know, why your home team would feel special? Well, Major League Baseball has decided that the visitor clubhouse has to be just as special as the home clubhouse. Now, they're not specifying wood lockers, let's say, but it's gotta have a commissary and it's gotta have X number of lockers. Uh, we have to add another whirlpool to the training room. So the home clubhouse has a training room with two whirlpools. The visitor clubhouse has to have a training room with two whirlpools. We did that, yeah. Really frustrating, but that is our reality. We have analyzed our existing facility, add on, you know, the only way we can accomplish this is by building a new clubhouse. On the second page, and I'll come back to the first page. On the second page, you'll see the two locations that we've identified for where the clubhouse would go. Um, one would be on the existing concourse. So if you're on the concourse and you know where the two buildings are and there's kind of that open space and Ballcore usually has like a little, uh, temporary barn, we have room to build a visitor clubhouse there. It's still gonna fit the temporary barn in, in some fashion. That would be a cheaper option. Um, it's about four hundred thousand dollars cheaper to put it there. The other option would be put it in, um, the outfield. We can see by the bullpens, we're not in the outfield, obviously, but in the plaza, by the bullpens. And, um, that's about two point five or two point three-ish million dollars there. MLB has indicated, again, verbally said on Twitter, I mean, um, that either location is workable, would you say? And, um, we would need to have that come online before the start of the twenty twenty-five season. You can see on that first page of the phase two that we, we include building a visitor clubhouse. Um, once we built a new clubhouse, then in our existing, um, downstairs, we would be relocating the weight room because our weight room is about a hundred eighty-five square feet too small to the new standard. And we remove the existing weight room into part of where the existing visitor clubhouse is. And the rest of the existing visitor clubhouse would be repurposed for other things that we need, so it's not wasted space. Uh, and then we'd be creating permanent female facilities and we wouldn't need to rent away downstairs.
Are the female facilities, is that for female umpires?
It's for female staff.
Umpires, uh, the umpires, training, trainers, uh, coaches that come up through there.
And is there a demand for that or this is just MLB's regular?
No, I mean, there's, there are, there are becoming more female umpires, one, and then two, there's, uh, I didn't say this past season, I had eight teams in the Southern League. We had two teams that had female trainers. We didn't have any female coaches this year, but, uh, um, there's, there's more females, uh, in baseball.
And this is, um, some of the items in the audit you can get hardship points for and some are automatic non-compliance. The female facilities is not a good thing. That, you know, we've got it provided and they specify, you know, under her showers and, uh, and all of that. So the new phase two, you know, excuse me.
So with this female facility, I mean, are we wanting to have to make it as nice as the other facilities now? I mean, is that something that comes down by?
So the, the female.
Where's this stuff?
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, we don't think about that. Um, the female facility, by that I mean that changing room and a bathroom. It's not like a commissary and all of that, but it is, um, it's basically a physical change room. So right now, the standard, the new standard specify, you know, you have to X per feet for changing area, um, you know, X number of toilets and shower and so. I think that's what they specify in the facility, the female facility. It's possible that Major League Baseball decide, you know, to read us out the standards in another two or three years. So what, uh, we're hoping that. So what we're trying to do is to, we can leave nine points on the table, right? But we have to, the only way we get there with what the facilities that we have now is if we're able to do the visitor clubhouse for the twenty twenty-five season. And our, we had Turner, if you recall, Turner did our cost estimates for the baseball facility. Then Tom Hopchie, some of you may remember Tom. He, he does this, only costing out facilities for the league. So he did the cost estimates for us, so we have a pretty good comfort level. Obviously, we would refresh those numbers when we got closer. Um, but we're estimating two point two to three point five million for these base two improvements. Um, the good news, and, you know, talking with Roger, is we feel that we'll have the funds to be able to do this. We're not gonna, we have a venue maintenance fund. We're not gonna need to dip into the general fund. You know, we've been setting money aside, um, we'll continue to set money aside. And so, um, Roger feels, will say, comfortable. Would we want to not have to set the money on this? Of course, but we have the funds to be able to do it or will have them by the time that we need them. Um, so, uh, what we're asking for in the next steps is for a city council to approve a resi- a resolution authorizing the mayor to move forward with phase one, not to exceed a amount of three hundred thousand dollars. We bring that to you at your improvement at your next meeting in January. And the reason, um, we will end up, you know, getting quotes, we'll follow the process that we have to follow. Most of these items are small. We have to go to the rooms and buy the structure. We have to, you know, buy a refrigerator. We're not necessarily from those things, right? So we have to buy some appliances. Um, we, for the netting, we've already been out there with Dustin, our building director, and we've gotta increase the, the height of the lights. We've gotta raise the netting up. We're gonna have to strike, hire a structural engineer because there's an infrastructural being that will have to be adjusted. There's lots of little things like that. If, um, if we need to come to you for every single individual item before we can execute, we'll never get it done before the start of the season. So what I'm suggesting is you approve a resolution but not to exceed a amount. As we get these items, we will bring them to you for your approval, standard process. But I don't wanna hold up having a contractor be able to go out and start doing work because I've missed a two-week cycle from the city council meeting. So we'll be very good with our paperwork. Roger's very good with our paperwork. And in some cases, we may have Ballcore go out and buy things and then we'll reverse Ballcore for them. Um, and Garrett and I have talked about that, about the things that they might wanna take on. Um, and so it's a little, a little bit different, if you will, because we're only might get a quote to do work and then bring a quote to you for approval. And I'm, we'll still, again, we've got a lot of the process, but we'd like a blanket not to exceed approval so that we can just start going out and, and acquiring these things. And so what Roger suggested with this resolution is that we would, you know, attach to it a list, a general list of items, kind of similar to what I've got here, um, maybe fleshed out a little bit more so that you understand what we're trying to do. And, and the only reason we're asking for that is because of the time constraint. Um, we felt like we were a bit ahead of schedule in some ways and then, um, our consultant architect, um, got sick and we just had a lot of delays in terms of getting the plans and then, you know, get feedback from Major League Baseball. So we're.
Just customer tangy, it's okay.
Yeah, we're just fine where we wanna be. Um, okay.
Do you wanna say real quickly with what you were saying? One is we're working with Ballcore because one of the things they're looking at as far as the two locations we were talking about is the possibility of adding a revenue generating option that they would pay for, but that might cost a little bit more. But in turn, and if you're talking about a restaurant out there, it would, we'd split monies on. And so that's one of the things we're working with them on as we move forward with that. Secondly, just to let you know, some, you know, how much pushback that we had. And I think mainly baseball, a lot of times, just arbitrarily just pick numbers and just went, this is what we're gonna do. So an example would be the batting cage, which we pushed back on some of that as far as, hey, it's a foot difference. And, uh, you know, our numbers, you know, are we able to do this, this, and this? And in- instead of having to completely change it, they made modifications. And we're going to continue to ask, when should we step in as mayor and council, the mayor who's representing us and saying, yes, just built a forty-nine, six million dollar facility. Can we have, you know, what else can we do to help ourselves but also make sure we're doing some of the things that you want? So we're not done in asking for help, but we also wanna be prepared for a worst case and wanna bring you guys up to date as quickly as we could.
So, um, as Mayor indicated, the last bullet there, um, I, within the next six months, we would expect to come back to you regarding phase two with, um, some specific numbers. Ballcore's gonna be doing some performa announces because putting the clubhouse, um, out by the bullpens would be more expensive, um, which, would it be our choice, right, to spend more money than we have to? But if there's a way to make that revenue generating, then it's worth looking at. So we'll expect to, within the next six months, hopefully much sooner than that, come back to you with that plan and then, um, and then get approval to move forward because we will need to move into construction drawings and, and, and so forth, um, you know, next fiscal year and the end of construction in, in next fiscal year in order for the facility to be done for the twenty-five season. Um, I guess, not that it makes it maybe less painful, but, um, if it's any consolation, um, we're not as bad off as some facilities. And, you know, Garrett talks with a lot of folks in the league and, um, and, you know, all, every single, basically every single facility, um, is having to do this. Um, and, uh.
We're probably better shape, being newer, some of those, I mean, you know, they're not making the road anymore, like, you know.
And most, a lot of the facilities are building these, um, buildings in the outfield. Because that's the only place that they can do it.
Yeah, I think that was, I'll say that, because I know that originally there was more rear. It's about a restaurant that, because it's a lot of supplies. I'll say that it's, it was pretty, I don't even think it was on the screen, right? It was written, it was written, at least not long, like, in the future, would, would be written.
So Ballcore, I think is planning on hiring an architect to kind of look and figure out what you could fit over that clubhouse and then be able to develop a performa off of that and then come back to the city, um, and talk to us about, if this is the revenue that can be generated, this is why it makes sense to spend an extra, you know, four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars to put it up.
Any questions? All right, thank you both. And so we get that, yes, go forth with the resolution over. Thank you so much.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, Garrett.
Baseball team?
Okay, next on our agenda and last is the governance transition update. As you all know, at our last meeting, uh, we were informed that petitions and signatures have been submitted for validation. And under the, actually, there are certain deadlines, certain things that have to happen, not the statutory things that have to get done. And so we've asked our city attorney to brief all of us on what needs to happen. And then, uh, we're gonna start with, uh, do you have Brian's presentation, uh, on the timelines? And then the mayor and I will be back behind him and share some additional information.
All right. Basically where we're at right now, uh, as we all learned Monday, petitions were submitted to appropriate judges in order to, uh, kick off the whole process of us having a special election vote on whether or not we can transition to the, to the council management system. Now, what I've, five forty-one is a little handout, it's a little wonky than what you can see here in my presentation. But basically, I, what I did was I went through here and I tried to give some context as far as real dates, as far as how this will move. And you'll see this, a bit of a sprint for the next couple of months as far as things and dominoes that bought for us in order to, uh, meet, you know, come to a couple of forks in the road as far as whether or not we proceed once the petition's submitted, once it's verified, and then ultimately, once there's a vote and what to do if we do in fact have a vote or a majority to transition or not transition. So what I've done here is first give you a little bit of.
So what I've done here is first give you a little bit of, like I said, a little more information as far as the deadlines, but any one of these deadlines could very easily move by, you know, a couple of days if something happens a little earlier or a little later, but ultimately, I just wanna give you an idea of end dates, how, how these things will dominate one right into the other. So what I'd like to point out is, with this being filed on January the 4th, we now are gonna vote on whether or not the Council Manager Act of 1982, whether we're gonna adopt that new form of government with a new manager system. Now, the way this is gonna work, it's a long road from this point forward if there's not a couple of forks in the road. One, January 4th, we got the petitions, and if everything continues, if there is in fact a vote adopting this, it will be all the way out by November 25th, when we first have our elections. So I just wanted to kind of walk you through some of the more immediate deadlines that we have, and then we'll see if we have a good two and a half years waiting period before we actually implement the government, if in fact there is a vote that approves it. I don't know if I can read that from here, so I'll just...
And we did email us the whole thing?
Absolutely, and I'll just let you know that most information's on this handout. This is just, we can kind of break it down to explain some of the sub cons. All right, so where we're at now, basically, as soon as these petitions were submitted to the probate judge on January 4th, the time started ticking for the probate judges to start verifying the petitions. They have a deadline to sit by statute, then to certif- to verify and to certify whether or not there's enough signatures by January 19th. Now, the judge, probate judge could very easily do it sooner, and although there is in fact a 15-day deadline, you know, things happen in reality and may happen later. But January 19th is the date that we expect, at the latest, that the judge will notify us that there is, they verify them and confirm whether there are enough signatures or not enough signatures. A few points I wanna point out about this. This is all in accord with the probate judge, this is not anything that the city's undertaking. This is not a situation where petitions were sent to the city and the probate. Probate judge is handling all this, the verification process, and once they complete their process, they will then simply give us notice. They don't transmit petitions to us, we don't work with them, you know, to go through any of this. It's just as simple as, hey, we did our job as probate, mayor, we determined there's not enough signatures or there are enough signatures. A few things as well, there's no requirement of a person signing these petitions, but they voted in the last election. So they're not going through verifying whether or not, you know, somebody actually voted in the last election, they're just voting whether or not they were in fact equalled our residents. So going through this process, you know, we've further figured that it might be about approximately 900 votes needed, voters that signed the petition, I don't know the exact number, but it's someplace in that, in that area. But basically, the probate judge has to go through and verify 10% of voters in the last general election. And once they finish that, then they'll send notice over to the mayor, and like I said, January 19th is the deadline. Now, one thing to, you know, keep in mind though is, as they go through, if something's illegible, or if they go through and find out that Mickey Mouse signed it, you know, petitions 700 times, or whatever, they're, very well could be, you know, they may not have enough signatures. So what happens then? Well, it's pretty simple, all they have to do is just simply take the signatures back and try to get more signatures. If there's some defect, they can, you know, try to correct them and bring them back. But that's not, there's, there's nothing that's like, you didn't have enough, you can't do this again. It's just as simple as come back, try again as many times as they want until they actually get the signatures. So there's no limit as far as when the petitioners have to resubmit, there's no limit on how many times they can come back. But we don't know yet, is, this is the fork in the road. If there's not enough signatures, or maybe they, they thought they had enough signatures, but they had to eliminate these, can't verify certain signatures, they might not make it to the threshold. So this is the first fork in the road, and we'll fi- find out January 19th whether they do it back out. So that would of course affect our timeline, they have to take the petition back and resubmit it, but we're assuming that it, that they submitted, they thought they had enough signatures. All right, so as far as what happens at that point, January 19th, probate judge says, all right, I've verified all this, and I've come to the conclusion that there are enough signatures to proceed, or that there is a verification. At that point, 10 days, the mayor has set the deadline, and 10 days after being notified, it's your proclamation to actually set the date of an election. Now, the mayor can of course do the proclamation earlier, but he has to do it within the 10 days. And we're confident that there, there won't be any lag or any problem getting it done within the 10 days. One thing, and it may be a little, I don't know if you said that it's ambitious, but we've already put together a draft resolution and put it on January 23rd, and if, on Jan... It may move very quickly, if they, January 19th, we have the probate judge says we verified this. If we get a proclamation over the next couple of days, we may very well be able to keep this date to January 23rd, but that just remains to be seen, the, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead myself there for the...
Way ahead of you.
Yes, I did. But basically, first, the deadline for the bear...
I didn't know we put a resolution to that.
Yes, well, one of the things that we've done is, I've talked with us, outside council verified, the best way to, to do this is the next step, and the first thing that we're gonna have to do is, we have to designate a valid ballot language, not only that we want to adopt, or that the petitions won't put to vote to adopt manager, the council manager system, but we also have to designate on that ballot how many council seats we're gonna have. So what we have to do, and the reason before, if, if they do in fact come back and, and the probate judge tells us that they've certified it, they've verified it, mayor then has to issue a proclamation, we have to determine when that election's gonna be. It has to be no later than 90 days out, no sooner than 40 days from the day that he receives the petition. So January 23rd, this is now that I'm finally getting to, I gotta head myself. This is the point where we have to actually say, all right, we're gonna have an election, it's been set. Now, we have to determine whether we're gonna go with five seats, sorry, five total seats, including the voting mayor, or if we're gonna go with seven seats, including the voting mayor. So we have to do that through a resolution that says, this is the ballot language that we're gonna use, and then Doc's basically saying, we've received this, we're gonna have the special election, and this is the former government, because there's two ways we can go with that. So that's why we have to have a resolution, it doesn't have to be January 23rd, that may be too soon, but it may very well work out that we can do it on the 23rd, maybe that first council meeting. And if anybody has a question, I know that, as I get into some of these deadlines, feel free to interrupt these, if you have like, you know, wanna go ahead and jump in and have a question about some of these deadlines. But, so that's not written stone as far as January 23rd. So special election deadlines, like I said, basically, the window that I've looked at, if this stays in line with, you know, what we anticipate, everyone, all these dominoes following, would be sometime between late February and probably no later than April 11th, 2023, before we could actually set the special election. Now, this just has to be done by proclamation by the mayor, so that is basically, we have to determine what date to actually set it.
And then this year, the election must either be the second or fourth, you said?
That is correct, and that's why we came up with April 11th, just a little minute and a half later. That would be, it appears like it would be the late 70s to do it. All right, so working with outside council, we have put together a composed ballot language that would essentially elect, do six members, six member districts, and this is the language, I'll let y'all read before we sell. It's pretty simple, but it just basically says, we adopt Council Mayor Act of 1982, and that, that government will have one member, shall be the mayor elected at large, you shall be a voting member of the council, the six members shall be council members selected from a single member district. So this is why they'd be voting, both, we have transition, and do we stick with, do we go with less council seats, or do we have the maximum amount of council seats? This would be the maximum. All right, so this is our focal fork in the road. Once there's, once we, you know, set up the election, have the date set, and we just simply vote on that ballot language that we just put up there. What happens if we do in fact get a vote of yes? Things move pretty quickly. Five days after the election, mayor has to send a certificate of adoption to the governor, the secretary of state, and probate judge. And at that point, the city doesn't necessarily have to pass anything as far as ordinance at that time, but there, there could very well be some, there, there could be some loose ends for us to have to deal with. I won't get into the, into the weeds as far as that goes, but for the most part, simply voting on, on the former government, that in itself adopts it. We don't have to do much more to adopt the, adopt the government. At that point, as far as the timeline goes, at that point, we would then have to notify our consultants that are handling redistricting, because we're having to redistrict anyway because of Voting Rights Act. At that point, we've been holding off, telling the citizens, I've always determined whether we need to redistrict to both qualify on the Voting Rights Act and, and meet that, along with the new districts that would meet, you know, changing the district from seven to six. So that would be one of the very first things that we would have to do, is just put them on those, let them know that they can go ahead and proceed with six seats pursuant to the new boundaries, which they have not presented in plans yet. But there is no deadline on that necessarily, but none of this becomes effective until November 2025, when the council and the mayor actually take office. So basically, it's a lot of springs, a lot of things we have to do, boom, 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 very quickly to get us through to the election, then it's a whole lot of waiting for about two and a half years.
Well, we'll need that time to draw the lines.
Ab- absolutely, and now, on the alternative, what happens if the majority, you know, there's a vote, and the majority say, now we've done all this? Well, we're still gonna have to redistrict, because like I said, for the Voting Rights Act, so we're just gonna proceed with the seven districts model, but there's gonna be a change as far as how they're, they're mark, causing the changes in our population. So our consultants can continue that, it's just a matter of, you know, how many districts they're using. But the important thing is, if there is a vote of no, then this cannot be reconsidered for two more years. So then, and that's it, no vote, very simple.
So I have a group of questions.
Sure.
Why do we have to have six districts and the other one seven, or why not seven districts? Because if you had that with six districts and you had a voting mayor, you have six to vote, which makes it easier to deadlock.
No, no.
Six districts.
I'm sorry, I forgot. Yeah, I'm sorry, it, it's, yes. So it's very easy if there's a no. If we have a yes, like I said, we have all these different groups that we have to run through. But regardless, we're gonna have to go through this redistricting process. So the redistricting process has its own little timeline. The first thing that we're gonna have to do is have our consultants come back, go through study, and their, their plan to present and present to us, and then we're gonna have to go through presenting this to the public and having public meetings, input meetings. And then after that, we have to... So this process itself could take several months, but we don't have the real, real pressing deadlines as far as the redistricting for the purposes of trans- transitioning into the council manager system. But then, I guess the real deadlines just have to come by 2025, and of course, we should have well for that, hopefully, you know, this year. But the redistricting is a creature of the law in itself, just a matter of whether we do it for, we change the number of districts. But like you said, all of this, a good two, maybe two and a half, you know, year period there that we have between an actual vote, if there is in fact a vote to transition, there's a lot that has to be done at City Hall. We have to basically go through every single city code and update and change. Everything that says report to the mayor, or anything that changes with the duty here or there, and it's all over the place, as far as city code, ordinances, places you wouldn't expect it to be. So it's basically gonna be, we're gonna have to go through those codes, find who come, identify what things need to be changed, but we had plenty of time to do that, fortunately. Same thing goes with, you know, like I said, places you wouldn't expect it. You're gonna have to go through all those award committee plans, some of them change. Job descriptions, a lot of the reporting of every single job description would be different. It no longer says it reports to the mayor, it now it's reported to the manager. So there's a lot to go into that, but if you phase it in and, and basically, you know, handle it at a steady pace, you have something that can easily be done, but it's more of a sprint at the beginning that'll, you know, a good long period before we actually get to the election. So, so nothing goes into place, we don't get a manager until August, you know, the August 2025 elections, then once you're seated in November of 2025, that's when the manage- the council managers system actually comes into play, and at that point, that's when you actually have the manager. There is a process by which we can hire a manager before the actual implementation in November of 2025, but it gets a whole lot more complicated. We can, we can do it for a period of four months, it has to be temporary, but as explained to me the way that I talked with our outside council, we would be operating under a different manager council act if we did it before we went into, implemented or hired the manager before November 2025. So it's, it's a little more complicated, but there's some pros and cons to that. One, you can bring someone in, four months, build them out, you know, make it probationary period to get to know someone, see if it's a good fit, whereas you may not have the same kind of options once you actually, you know, hire them after November 2025. So there's some, there's, there's a discussion we had there, but it is a possibility, but it's, it's a little more complicated because you're operating under a different code, and then the duties will be different before November 25, different reporting requirements, it's a little bit of a nightmare, and then things are all different after, you're working with two separate acts. But yes, it is a lot. There are a lot of pros and cons both ways, absolutely.
The whole purpose of it is to add continuity, so, I mean, there's a contradiction in that.
Well, if you want the new council and mayor to really have the, I, I would think that personally.
Well, that can do, but you need to get them to, I mean, say, for instance, everybody here gets voted out. You have, you have a new council of completely different kind, you know, governments, and they wouldn't have problems.
Well, the system has been a good, for all the people that, where they bring in an interim superintendent that has his fair game, so how to keep the ship moving forward, so. I mean, my personal opinion, I would guess in 2025, you're not gonna ship higher than permanent. Maybe we can do a midterm.
Yeah.
We can do a midterm to get a transition, if it's, or even there, you know, for there.
Well, the COVID is clear, asking for a four-month temporary period, so the, the clock will be ticking as far as the period that you could have interim.
I agree with that, that question for four months, hoping they would continue to stay after that time and effort. And obviously, we have to do that, it's kind of a period, there's some continuity.
The question is, do they, we were in, or do we wait until November 25? And we've got time to think about that, lots of time.
Well, depending on, but the change was on ballot as far as the vote.
No, everything's gonna be the same, and the one thing of it is, the 1982 manager, no, there's two sections, there's a section 1981 and a section 1982. And through the vote, the, we do, nothing comes, we don't work in, underneath the code 1982 until November 2025, and then we're gonna see through that election. So yet, nothing changes as far as the ballot goes. We can basically implement the manager report as separate procedure that's...
John, you still there?
Yep, a lot of them, well.
Okay, do you have any questions or anything?
No, not yet, I mean, honestly, I'm still with such a mess and still studying it. You know, I get a lot of, a lot of questions throughout the community, but, yeah, at the end of the day, it ain't our decision, that's the public's, right? I mean, everybody knows. I mean, what I hear is, this is different than the tax referendum vote, where we did not have to pass a resolution requesting, this is something the citizens took on their own, got the signatures, they're being reviewed, and following the law is, you know, it's, it gets put on the ballot period. Is that fair, understanding?
Yes.
I, the only thing, we've got, the mayor sits the election, he's got 10 days to do that. Our only role is to pass a resolution that approves the ballot language, and our only decision point is whether it's five or seven districts with the mayor voting. So as between the two, he's drafted seven districts. So that would mean, if it passes, we reduce from seven districts to six council districts with one mayor voting. So that would mean if it passes, we reduce from seven districts to six council districts with one mayor voting at large. And so that's how he's gonna present it. If it, if everything happens according to the timeline he's presented, it will have seven districts in the ballot language. Okay.
Well, it won't have seven districts. It'll have seven voting members, right?
Yes, sorry. Seven, yes, seven voting.
We're seeing that you are paying attention.
Okay.
Well, one of the districts is.
Yeah, well, who's coming over here sleeping or not?
I, I think it is seven districts because one is at large.
Technically, yes, it means one at large district.
So you're wrapping districts, that's how it is. Okay. All right. So the next thing that, uh, the mayor and I wanted to present to you. And Eric, if you wanna put up the second slide presentation on the government's transition update. Um, Eric, you've got the clicker and I asked Mayor Finley just to help us understand all of his duties so that we can kind of help understand what would be divided.
Okay, so I kinda took it into, um, two different areas. One was, you know, we have a mayor's office, so now we manage City Hall, we also manage the mayor's office itself. Currently, the direct reports in that office are a city administrator, uh, administrative assistant to the mayor, and then, uh, council approved, and we recently hired a second communications and external affairs officer, and that person will start February sixth. So those are my direct reports in the mayor's office. In addition, uh, the mayor is responsible for managing, and I'll send this to you, Johnny, so you can take it.
Yeah.
Um, so they also are responsible for hiring and do daily management of the filing direct reports. And that's the police, the fire, the police chief, the fire chief, city clerk, city attorney. Of course, currently, all four of those positions are put in place by council and managed by the mayor. Director of Human Resources, Director of IT, Finance, the court clerk, um, Director of Developmental Services, um, who then manages currently, um, she manages building and revenue. So they, she, they report directly to her right now. And then I also now have Engineering, Public Works, Recreation, and Revenue. So all of those folks direct a report to the mayor's office, and we manage the day-to-day. And I say day-to-day, we manage the strategic vision with them. Make sure that they're accomplishing their budget, the different tasks that they have. So while all those direct reports, um, you know, sometimes they're weekly meetings, sometimes they're bi-weekly, sometimes they're monthly, but we make sure that all of those folks with their respective departments are meeting the criteria that the city has. Other duties, we, the mayor nominates multiple city board positions. We oversee the city branding and the marketing functions. So one of the things that we work hard to do is, is try to have one vision, one voice, and, and manage all that accordingly. We make the final call on weather events, uh, and, and city functions. So if we're, you know, coming in two hours late, that's our responsibility, working with our department heads to figure out, we nominate the employee of the year, and we present the state of the city. Uh, and our Chamber of Commerce does a great job in helping us with that. A lot of these are smaller, but you know, then you get into the ceremonial functions. And when I say that, all of these entities have events that we in the City of Madison are represented at. I'm not the only one that does this, but a lot of times, whether it's, you know, the City of Madison groundbreaking events, ribbon cuttings. You know, we've had four ribbon cuttings in three days here, and we've been to every one of those. Council members have been with me at times. We also represent the City of Madison at all the Redstone Arsenal events, including change of command ceremonies, groundbreakings, ribbon cuttings, special ceremonies, and the one I left off there is Christmas, which is a really kind of a busy time. Uh, City of Madison Chamber of Commerce events, uh, also the Huntsville Madison County Chamber event. So that's not only the local ones, that's if we go someplace, whether it's the DC, Montgomery, uh, we, we are with them in many instances. Uh, also, the CVB, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, uh, we represent the folks at Toyota Field and the Trash Panda Events, the US Space and Rocket Center, uh, we speak on behalf of the City of Madison, special events. So where everybody gets off, we have a couple of different Memorial Day celebrations, Veterans Day, Fourth of July, Christmas Street Festival, and assorted others. And then there's a lot of things that occur, AUSA, NASA, SMDC, and assorted conferences where we speak. So I can call them ceremonial, but in some instances, you know, you're actually presenting the city, uh, the state of the city to some of these folks to give an idea of what's happening. We also act as the primary contact, and I think this is one where a lot of the entities, the Madison City Schools, the EMA, uh, the relations with the federal Congress, with, with Congress, with the, the state, uh, with our local representatives. So we work with the governor's office, uh, we work, you know, with a lot of the things that go on. The Big Ten mayors, uh, the relations with the Madison Chamber of Commerce. So not only do we represent the city at those events, but we also are the ones with these different primary contacts, where we're the ones that strategically sit down with them. Now, right now, the Huntsville Chamber is working on their federal agenda. The Madison Chamber just got dug with theirs. We're the ones who sit down with them and help them kind of figure out those types of things. Uh, in addition to that, we sit on the NPO board, uh, we, uh, manage the city, uh, relations with all of the entities on Redstone Arsenal. Now, we don't go to all seventy of them, but there's a lot of those different entities that we'll go to and talk. And they'll sit down, hey, can we do a meeting on what we're doing, which we try to look like we understand what's going on, but we're at least there. Uh, we manage all the city relations with Huntsville, Madison County, and the surrounding cities. When it comes to some of the road projects, some of the recreation projects, we do that. And we act as the liaison for lobbying for the state and federal funding and legislation. So we're, we're working with lobbyists, and we act as the primary contact for setting up meetings, for helping them understand what we're trying to accomplish and where we wanna put, uh, uh, a majority of our time. That was the main ones. Can you catch? May has the rest of them. Because, because she had a microphone in front of her.
Okay, so.
I have that back.
I can dodge it. It's like a wrench.
Okay, so, uh, the questions for the city council, if the council manager for our government passes in the special election. We've got three big questions that are kind of looming out there in the community, and we haven't had a chance to really talk about this together as a group. We've certainly seen the recommendations of the task force, uh, but this is an opportunity to kind of get that all rolling and let people know what it is we're thinking in terms of what the qualifications of a city manager would be, what would the role of the mayor be, and what would the salary of the city manager and manager be? Okay, so let's start with qualifications of the city manager. Uh, these recommendations that ICMA has in terms of educational background, um, and this was also highlighted by the task force. This is a person who, uh, would have a degree in public administration, business management, accounting, engineering. They have work experience, and, um, in order to build a job description, these are things that the council would start by building a bullet point list, things that you would be looking for, and that would help our new HR director, uh, build a job description. So. Absolutely. And so not only in terms of the educational background, but the work experience. The recommendation is a minimum of five years' experience as a city manager. Uh, certifications, being credentialed, um, as a manager with that certification from ICMA. And so I want to, um, talk to you, have you all, uh, give your feedback in terms of what is the type of person? I think the task force has mentioned that this is not somebody who's a retired city council member. This is not somebody, this is not the role. This is somebody who is a trained, certified professional. And so I wanna get your feedback in terms of what you've heard, uh, from the task force and what the recommendation are. That is, is that indeed something you would wanna put on that bullet point list?
I think for me, it'd be somebody that even came, it's like doing this job, all of the, they're the same. I mean, for somebody doing this job for a while, that understands what, what it feels like, especially them coming in. Especially them coming in to be the first one here, and you have a minimum of five, like I said.
I would like to see more than five. I mean, you could, you have a minimum of ten.
Well, if you say minimum of five, that is the minimum. So it would have to be five or more.
If that's somebody coming in that almost helps create their role, even though we can put these in, they're gonna probably know more what that feels like than we do.
And I would like to see five years' experience as a city manager to a city similar in size and population as Madison. I don't, my, my personal feeling would want to be a city manager of a city of ten thousand people.
Okay. All right, then, um.
I mean, a lot of these make sense, but you won't, if Madison chooses to do this, we'll be the largest city in the state of Alabama to do this. So you're not gonna find anybody, I mean, but some of them are gonna come from smaller cities that would have the Alabama experience. But they, you know, the key is having a city manager experience of manage, managing city department heads, understanding how municipal government works, putting together budgets. So five years' minimum experience is critical. You know, the size of city is gonna be determined by, you know, in many instances. And, and again, I agree with Greg, sometimes you can get somebody out of, you know, a, another city that's struggling in, in.
A lot of people like Mountainver, Mountainver has a city manager in their, right around the, around the bounty? Yeah, so, I mean, I mean, if I had a, a wish list, I'd want it to be at least a population. So they're used to working with a department of three hundred people, a hundred and twenty people, something like that.
Well, and if you're doing a nationwide search, this is a more common form of government in the Southeast. And so we're not limited to Alabama cities to look at. And so that's another piece of it is already wanting to do cast the net wide, try to find a best professional.
A lot of net and get the best person.
It's uncommon, it's uncommon in Alabama.
That's right.
Right, so I think we do have to go nationwide.
Yeah, I mean, you absolutely have to. You're narrow, you're looking for a CEO, right? You're aiming for some CEO, I mean, even, even corporate world, you know, those guys and gals kind of trade out positions. So that's, you know, you're not looking for, you know, my job, I'm telling you, you're not skilled in this, you're not good.
Some other recommended required knowledge sets, instead of, like, get your feedback on whether, um, you're good with these in terms of getting it all up and starting, um, a job description, proven skills, and person-to-person relationships, and personnel management, comprehension of financial and cost accounting methods and reports, the ability to read and interpret engineering drawings and maps, and understanding basic engineering principles, ability to communicate effectively verbally and in writing, familiarity with data processing systems, and experience in preparation for administrative budgets, and purchasing procedures. Now, there's a number of things that we can add in terms of things that you might find desirable, and I think that if, uh, this passes, and then we would gather other, not required, but desirable qualifications that each of you would want to see in a job description. We would, and I left that blank just to know that this will be a building process in terms of, you know, making sure we capture all of the skills that we would want this professional to have.
You manage them, you put them in management, all of those two, I think that'd be good for you to understand. All of you, what we have, all the tools we have, if that looks like, you know, that all the things we're looking at.
I'll leave that note, and feel free to share, and then of course, I'll share just these measurements that we're sending needs to add to the appointment list.
So we, I mean, I'm assuming, you know, to me, I feel like we've got a part of the, of the coordinator. I'm assuming we can come back to this after.
We would.
So, okay.
Just planning this.
Right, and also just sharing, um, what we're looking for, what we're thinking about. Because I think that's important when, when people are going to vote on this. Are we, are we picking our best friend or are we picking a professional? I mean, are we picking somebody that has these credentials? Are we looking for the best that we can get in doing nationwide search? And so it's good to know how everybody's thinking all those times.
I, I just like to, a lot of those times, we aren't really, it's the people's choice. This is us saying, this is what it may look like, so they have an idea of what it may look like. Not that we're telling them this is what it has to be, and that's our thing. Just, so just leaving this as a brought out one, because I'm looking at Teddy, we're not trying to say this is what has to happen. We're just letting you know, these are the things that are out there that would be considered professional.
You're bringing up a good point because we've done, um, an interview process before for police chief. It was a public process. Is that what you would imagine this process would be so that we would get?
Absolutely.
And have input and open public interviews so that, and indeed, um, when we would do, when we interviewed for superintendent candidates, they also got to meet the department heads and, and get to meet with people in the city before doing public interviews. And so you get that feedback from your own department heads.
I think the most important message we need to get out is we're hiring a professional that does this job. It's not gonna be a current city administrator, which has been the rumor mill, that, you know, that's gonna happen. We're gonna hire a degree professional if this even passes for city manager. And I think that's the most important message we need to get out. It's not gonna be, you know, Tommy or me when I come off or anybody like that. It's gonna be somebody that is degree specified.
Also wanna just clear that we're not trying to influence which way the vote should go. We're always talking amongst ourselves, what this might look like for educational purposes.
Well, these are things that we're gonna have to sit down and decide. We, we would have to build the job description, you have to have a bullet point list.
If it is approved, yes. I just got at that point, I just don't, I don't know, I'm thinking, they're sitting around saying, this is what it will look like because it's what they want to happen. It's no.
No, I think we're just showing what the product is.
No, it's easy.
Yeah, we're done. I, I think it's important to clear up, what is the product? And the product is going to be a professional.
Right, we're just not trying to influence.
We're not, no. And I don't believe we have at this point. Nobody is asking my opinion, you know, directly. So, you know, and, and I don't think that that's our role to say one way or the other. But I think our role is to be prepared, and our role is to get out the most accurate information of what the role of the city manager is gonna be.
Okay, and that, but I'm, I'm just, we're not trying to influence anyone.
Okay, you say that, but if you don't give people an understanding of what they're going for, then they're gonna say, why would I change it?
Educ, education is good. I'm just trying to, we're sitting here discussing it and discussing what could be not, this is what we think should happen. I just want that really clear.
Almost a daily passage, that's what I picture of that.
We, we, we do that all the time. We just got to do it now to go to.
Okay, the other thing that, um, is a question out there is what would the role of the mayor be? If indeed this passes and you have all of these duties that are required of the city manager, um, what would, what would the mayor do? And you saw all the duties in terms of the day-to-day operations, those are the ones that go to the city manager. But then, the mayor just gave us a very long list of things that he does also in addition to the day-to-day operations. And so, um, some of those things that were on that list, um, the others that are ceremonial, primary contact list, there are other things. Um, and Mr. Kevor, you can jump in if you want to clarify on this point. Uh, it is not only, even though the statute mentions ceremonial duties, that is not an exhaustive list of what the mayor would do.
It's not. In fact, it, uh, mentions that there's other duties as far as maritime, uh, you know, as well. And it, it does limit the administrative duties, but, uh, from my understanding, as far as how far, uh, there's, it's not gonna be strictly ceremony, there's gonna be additional duties that the mayor would maintain outside of it.
Indeed, the mayor illustrated a number of what some of those duties would be.
Go back a couple of slides.
Sure.
You can always do a place, so, uh, right there. So representing, so when we got to represent, you know, going to groundbreaking, ribbon cutting, those kind of things, that's, that's what this mayor would continue to do. So if you go forward now, you go on, so now, primary contacts? This basically turns into your city manager. Your city manager is the one developing in many instances, um, policy and, and, and being the one sitting down strategically, which, you know, to me, it's just kind of hard to separate those right now. I'm still, I, I truly am trying to wrap my head around how that would work sitting in this chair.
I, I don't know that that might not be a collaboration on some of these things. I, I see some of these things.
You go back to a lot of the, a lot of the policy, and that's what we'll have to talk about. It's almost, you're not responsible for that as mayor. You're the city, you can, you basically manage city council. This city manager is the one who manages a lot of that, put in place by a council. So that just tries to break it up for you as far as the ceremonial pieces. You go and represent when it comes to policy and a lot of the discussions of how to put things together, budget, as city manager.
Well, obviously, but, but also, but I'm looking at the lobbying stuff and the relationships with the.
You had that question, the city manager manages the lobbyists.
I didn't say lobbyist. I said lobbying and relationships with legislators. So there, there are nuances there.
Another new role for the mayor would be becoming president in the city council, setting the agenda for signing at council meetings, ruling on points of order, calling special meetings, signing ordinances and resolutions adopted by council. So the role of the mayor supplants the role of the president of the council. Uh, mayor would vote at council meetings. And appointments, there are appointments, uh, to council committees that the mayor would make. And already, we have a list of things that the mayor appoints. And already, we have a list of things that the mayor appoints in the council manager act. It's very specific that the city manager does not appoint members to boards and commissions and things like that. The mayor and the council will retain those appointment powers. Now, the salary of the city manager and the mayor. Current lane, with the latest cost of living increase, numbers, the current salary of the Madison mayor's office, that's the mayor and the city administrator, is almost right at one hundred eighty four thousand. If the vote passes, I, I think we need to talk about this. The city administrator position goes away and the mayor's salary would necessarily decrease, because the mayor's no longer doing all of the things. I think people have speculated that would be the case, but I think it's important for us to have that discussion and say it out loud, so people understand that when we're looking at our budget and what we allocate toward that office, we have enough to cover a city manager, and we have enough to cover a new salary for a mayor with new duties. And the way that you, we usually set a salary is based on how long that list is. And we do comparisons with other cities and other mayors who do similar jobs to determine what it is that person would make. So I had worked with our HR director who just retired and asked her for some salaries, her right information, just to kind of help us. So you can kind of see where we are in line with other large cities in Madison, other cities with mayor and city managers and administrators, and also through up there Hoover. So you can kind of get a sense of where these salaries are. Where ours is, we're certainly in line.
One of the things that I, I do, what, my prepared purpose, was I like that we're, we're doing away with the city administrator, but we're also losing a, you see on the council, or council mayor.
If it passes, that's right.
Yes, this is all if it passes. So that salary wouldn't go away. So that's another approximately seventy thousand dollars that could be put into this equation if necessary. But I think one of the important things we need to look at is, if you look at the ceremonial duties on Paul's calendar right now, that's more than twenty hours a week, probably. I would say that, that's, yeah, thirty, thirty-two to forty hours a week, just in that. So what we're looking at is, we have what we need to determine as we're looking at the duties, is, does this become a full time, is it a three-quarter time? And base the salary on that kind of a, an idea, rather than, oh, this is only a part-time, because our, our, a council president is part-time. That's not what this job will be. This is a lot more duties than what our current council president does.
Yes.
And so, we need to be looking more, I would think, in the range, just like what you said earlier, of, you know, which is easy to do, because you wind up with, if you take the salaries I discussed, the current council president, the district that goes away, the city administrator and mayor, we're looking at approximately between two hundred and eight and two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars a year-ish. So, um, just information, I'm sorry, I got lost in the weeds there. But, but we need to determine the duties in order to figure out how much time this person is gonna be spending. Are they part-time, three-quarter time, full-time? That's what I was trying to get at.
Okay, so can I just get a follow-up or nod that is everyone in agreement that this is not, if it passes, this is not a situation where we just add another six feet of salary and everyone else stays the same? It's not, we're gonna be, we would have to reorganize the way that we compensate. And because of the change in roles and responsibilities and the room, and the disappearance of one district, one county.
But I think you're gonna have.
Yeah, absolutely.
You're gonna have contradictions, though, because that, you know, city manager role, when you have some, they're doing administrative, they also have, have a, you know, administrative person as well. So, you know, maybe we're adding, maybe we're adding another ten thousand dollars. I mean, I'm saying.
She's not gonna manage both.
Yeah, she wouldn't be both.
She'll have another administrative assistant. Your city manager is gonna have to have a second, a manager to help you, especially with the city arc as hard as we are. You know, now your communication specialist is having to switch over to your city manager. You know, so, but there's gonna be, I do agree with you that there's, you know, not just the mayor, I would say it's the same, but you're all gonna have administrative requirements for both. We're talking office right now, so we kind of do two parties wanting to help.
And I was just gonna also let you know, there is a provision in the council manager act that says that you've got to wait till six months before you actually hire a manager, before you have to set these salaries for the mayor or the manager. So May twenty twenty-five, you know, is basically close about the time you have to have all this set in stone before you proceed with the rest, but just wanted to throw it out.
Another thing, I think we may want to exact, I think, for people to vote, there will be no call off, like really what is on there, what to do. But hopefully, I guess we're all figured out that'll pass. I think it's gotta be a, this is a range, you know, we'll, we'll hammer any club survey. It's gotta be a realistic range on all these things. Who we lose and who we add, and what kind of staff would we, would the mayor be? A secretary or some kind of assistant? I don't know, but, I don't know, there's some things like that that have to be come out before.
You go back to proclamations, I think, you know, a lot of those things are done, but I obviously don't want to. So I think you just go back to the law. There is going to be someone that has to administratively take care of both, and the Congress.
So I think, I mean, really, you have a mayor who has, still has an assistant. Then you have a city manager with an assistant, and they, you know, warrant people well. So that's, that's still six people, right, and there are five. So, you know, the, the number of people hasn't changed, other than one, so add one administrative role.
But then we lost one, you know. So the number of people hasn't changed.
Exactly.
I don't know how we're gonna get this information out, because I, I agree with what Karen says, we are impartial, this vote goes to the people. So how do, how does that necessarily get sent out to the people? I mean, we have access to everyone's voter registration? Do we just send an announcement saying there's gonna be a special election, and that's all the people? How is that done?
They're advertising this for elections. I mean, if you do, if there's an election, if there's a vote, you have to advertise in, in media, different media platforms, there's a legal recipe for how you do that. And then plus, I can only assume that Madison Forward would be putting out the information via social media or whatever. I also believe that I vote Madison would be putting out the information so that people could advocate it. We know that it was going on.
So it is a city entity, we would not be doing that.
Well, we would do what we would do in any election.
We would do that recipe.
We have a whip, we have certain requirements that we have to make available to voters. So that's not gonna.
I think one thing we can help with is frequently asked questions, type piece that go along with it, that we can, you know, answer, some answers we don't have. And you're just gonna, the responsibility of this body would be to tell the truth on what we know and what we don't know, and get a lot of the intelligence. Specifically answers to things, and we can specifically interrupt.
Until tonight, until we had this discussion, and I heard from each of you, I couldn't have answered the question for the city as to whether the salary of the mayor would reduce. But we've all said clearly, it must, because the duties change directly. And so, we would want to, could say certain things like that, isn't that a view?
We're starting tomorrow with that.
That's why you passed that resolution, the wars that you set the salary.
Well, but I think that part of, you know, when, when, came in in two thousand and eight, the salary was seventy-six thousand dollars, I suppose, paid department head in the city, and all that. And you've got that up there. You know, and one of the things I requested the council do is, please fund this at a different level. They did. You know, so now it's one hundred nineteen thousand dollars, at least, you know, make it to a respectable salary, which I appreciate very much. But, you know, you turn around, you put this salary too low, and nobody's gonna want this. Unless, if you go back, part of the discussion was who do you want in representing your city? And who do you want in managing your city? So, you know, we have to be respectful of the people's money, but you also need to put the money where you're gonna get the best possible result for your city. And I think that is something that, you know, there's a discussion that has to be had. So you drop it down to thirty thousand, you know, just whatever the number would be, wow, you know? So you get it at least to something where you're ceremonial, doing all the things that you're doing, while also managing the council. So there's, it's, it's a balance there. I don't have any answers, but, you know, and then you better, you know, you want a good city manager, well, you better put, you know, something in there that, that a respectful salary, you get that in there.
That's a good piece.
Yeah.
You know, I know, then I talked a little bit about what that salary of the mayor looks like. And you could, so, you can argue both sides of that all they want. Look at all of the, but, the manager's made, I mean, he.
He's assigned as a president of council.
Yeah, and he, he works probably for what's out to be, you know, these things. And I'm not saying that, but, you got something happening.
And it would be choice, choice for the person who runs the city. Would it be willing to do it as, this is where I'd be going to promote, this is how I need to handle it. And maybe they have a part-time job, and they know some duties, ceremonial things, I think. But that's gonna be the person who's just.
I love it, you can have a part-time job, you know, I mean, you live there.
You basically can have a part-time job and do just ceremonial part of the job. I don't. But then, and then you can add on the duties that the council president, so that may be forty, I'm forty. I mean, I threw up the number thirty-two hours a week, but I didn't really think about the addition of the council president.
To do the job well, to be able to communicate well with the guys, to be able to share what council can tell you, you know, but, so the, yeah, I think it's not, it, it has to be something worthwhile. Or, or, and again, if they're not gonna do it well, they're, you know, they're gonna kind of nail it.
Yeah, let me just tell you, as a council member, for the full time, it is, uh, there.
So it is something I think we need to continue to have some discussion on, because I do think, and I go back, you have to give the community an idea of not only what the job responsibilities are gonna be, but where each person has that job responsibility. You have to define a specific salary, you know, what does that look like? Because they're gonna be questioning, do you still get the quality of people? You know, you know, because of the qualification, you're gonna be a city manager. What do you have as far as the mayor is managing your council? So.
Right. And the more we talk about it, the more, I mean, like, it is a full-time job. I mean, and so, we need to consider that, because if you're already doing thirty-two hours a week of ceremonial stuff, then you have the council president job, which is twenty hours a week, at least. You're at the forty.
Okay, all right, so that's the last item on, what do you know, is the other post dates work with you all? What are some of our sessions gonna do? Um, our February. That's Asher Princepin, I don't know if that, I don't know. Oh, I, I'm sorry. That was where we're gonna do CIP, but very bad, that's, that would be considered being a fourth. Playing a.
Yeah, but I don't think she's managing a lot of the staff, you can discuss it, so, I mean, get it on the day that works for everybody. We're the ones that put that together, right? And that's, something set up in the past.
Three seconds, let's go and turn the, anyone to screen off.
Bye, John.